Commissioner Buck, you could start the meeting. You could call a meeting to order.
Yes. I hereby open the work session of the Springfield Planning Commission meeting. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rhodes is absent. Commissioner Buck?
Present.
Commissioner Driggs? Commissioner Thompson is also absent. Commissioner Greenwell? And Commissioner Schmunk?
Here. Me too.
Before we go on, I just want to find commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Weber. Sorry. It's on the next line.
Yeah.
Commissioner Weber is also here. Okay, go ahead Chair, Vice Chair Buck.
The only commissioner that I heard was Commissioner Schmunk. I don't think the other commissioners are starting their microphones. Remember to do that, guys. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
None from staff.
This is a meeting where the public may attend but not provide comment. There will be opportunities to address the Planning Commission later tonight in our regular meeting, which follows our work session at 7:00 P. M. I'd like to call the agenda item "The Fair Housing Training by a Very Young Sandy Belson."
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Sandy Belson. I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager. And I'm going to just introduce this item quickly and then turn it over to staff who will be doing the bulk of the presentation. But this is an item that we think is important for you to have some background in. And recognizing that we as staff are not experts in this topic. We know a fair amount and have learned a lot. And much of our training this evening is based on information from the Fair Housing Council. But just to say, we're going to do what we can, but if there are questions that you have or areas you want to explore further, we can rely on either our legal counsel or the Fair Housing Council to be able to go into some of that in more detail. So we have Katie Carroll here tonight, who is our housing analyst, and she's going to go over some of the history. And then Chelsea Hartman is going to go into more of how it applies to our work, particularly our comprehensive planning work. And then I'll wrap it up at the end. So I'll turn it over now to Katie.
All right, thanks, Sandy. So as Sandy mentioned, my name is Katie Carroll. I'm a housing analyst for the city. So also, as Sandy mentioned, this training is based largely, especially my portion, on Fair Housing Council of Oregon materials. And so sort of following how they structure their presentations before we get into talking about the Fair Housing Act and its requirements, just going to give some background to help set some context on why the Fair Housing Act was passed, kind of what led to it. So first, starting looking out at some historical context in the state of Oregon. What is now Oregon was originally home to more than 60 native tribes for thousands of years predating settlement of the area. Over time, fur trappers and farmers migrated to the Oregon area. And through that process, tribes were pushed into smaller territories through various treaties and violence. And there was also quite a bit of death due to spread of disease. In 1850, the Donation Land Act was passed, which promised land to white men and married couples who settled in Oregon. So that incentivized further settlement of the Oregon Territory at the time via the Oregon Trail. And then there was kind of a two-decade period of time where people were moving in. The U. S. Army and kind of the settlers were pushing tribes into reservation areas as the territory was settled. And then in 1877, the Dawes Act was passed, which parceled reservation land into individual plots. And as a result of that, a lot of tribally managed reservation land was further moved into management by non-native settlers. Kind of also occurring concurrently with this, there were several black exclusionary laws passed in Oregon. So in 1844, slavery was banned in the Oregon Territory, but that ban also prohibited black people from living in Oregon for more than three years. That was followed in 1849 by a law that barred black people who were not already living in Oregon from entering or residing the territory. And then in 1859, as a clause to the Oregon Constitution when it was adopted, there was a clause that prohibited new black residents in Oregon and also prohibited black people from owning real estate or making contracts in Oregon. There was also a provision of the Oregon Constitution that prohibited Chinese people from owning land or a mining claim unless they were already residing in Oregon at the time the Constitution was passed. Kind of federally, following all of this, in 1868, at the end of the Civil War, Fourteenth Amendment was passed, which granted citizenship to all people born in or naturalized in the United States. However, racism and segregation continued and were upheld by the decision in Plessy v. Ferguson, which happened in 1896, which ruled that separate but equal was not a violation of the Constitution. So basically saying that segregated spaces were okay. And then it wasn't actually until 2002 in Oregon that the language, the black exclusionary language in the Oregon Constitution was removed by voter repeal. And then just a little bit locally, we don't have as much information on this. Sandy might have planned to mention this too, but the museum is doing an exhibit on housing over, I believe, the next six months. It opens on Friday, so they may have some more local history in the exhibit. But in the 1920s, the Ku Klux Klan rose in popularity across the U. S., but Oregon had the highest membership per capita in the U. S. at the time. And Eugene was a large gathering area for the Klan. There were marches in downtown Eugene and cross burnings on Skinner Butte. Eugene was known as a sundown town, which meant that black people were not allowed to live within city limits. So in the 1940s, Eugene's black community settled outside of city limits along the north bank of the Willamette at what's now presently Alton Baker Park. Because it was outside of city limits, that meant there's no running water, electricity, or sanitation. But there were several homes and a community church, which is in the right image on the slide. In 1949, the county began constructing the Ferry Street Bridge, where the community was situated, and court ordered residents there to vacate their homes. And then 10 days later, demolished the homes in the neighborhood church, which displaced folks, many to West Eugene, but some to the Glenwood area as well. And then actually, just last year, in July of 2024, the Board of County Commissioners offered a formal apology for its actions related to that displacement. Okay. And then a little bit of history that's housing-specific. So segregation has been reinforced through housing, both by government policy and private actors. In the 1930s, the federal government started backing mortgages through the Federal Housing Administration, so FHA loans, if you're familiar with those. And those FHA loans allowed people to put less down for a down payment. Prior to FHA loans, someone had to put about 50% of the cost of a house down. And they also made fixed 30-year mortgages available. So that made homeownership much more attainable in the U. S., but it was not a benefit that was made universally available. The federal government created maps to assist decision-makers in government and financial institutions to decide where these government-backed mortgages would be available. And that system used color coding to kind of indicate which neighborhoods were better for providing FHA loans. It was a system of green, which was considered best, blue, which was still desirable, yellow, which was considered definitely declining, and red, which were labeled as hazardous areas. And if you've heard the term redlining, that's where that came from. So these were areas that the government identified as being very high risk for providing these federally backed loans. And those neighborhoods were often predominantly made up of minorities. And so in general, lenders refused mortgages in those areas, which effectively barred a lot of people from homeownership. The map on the screen there is that map I mentioned for the city of Portland. And according to the Fair Housing Council of Oregon, between 1934 and 1962, $120 billion in FHA loans were issued, but less than 2% of those went to non-white home buyers. Restrictive covenants was another tool that was used to create and reinforce segregation in housing. Restrictive covenants were used to prevent the sale or occupation of housing by people of certain identities, so often minorities or people of certain religions. And in 1948, restrictive covenants were found unenforceable in a decision called Shelley v. Kramer. So after that, courts would not enforce them. However, they continued to be enforced by lenders and realtors up to the passage of the Fair Housing Act. And we actually found an example of one of these restrictive covenants in a city-owned property. The covenant that was found in the city-owned property is shown on the screen there. In response to that, the council adopted a resolution last February, I believe, that directed the city attorney's office to remove the discriminatory covenant from that city-owned property and other city-owned properties, and then encouraged other property owners in Springfield to do the same. And then it also directed the city manager to provide information to the public on how to do that. So the city attorney's office has had that removed from city-owned property. And we now have information on our Fair Housing page on how anyone else can do that process. It's free in Oregon, and these covenants remain on a lot of houses that were built before 1948, even though they're not enforceable anymore. And then exclusionary zoning was another practice that was used in the early 1900s. Zoning was used to explicitly segregate based on race. However, that was found illegal in 1917 in the Buchanan v. Worley decision. And after that, cities began zoning more on form and function of buildings, so including housing type. And this locked in a lot of segregation by separating more expensive single-family housing from multi-unit housing, with single-family zones often requiring larger lot sizes, large minimum house sizes, and sometimes occupancy limits that resulted in socioeconomic segregation. And then urban renewal, which is a program still used today, was used a lot in the mid-1900s to clear areas that were deemed a slum and blight for new housing and improvements. However, those areas that were cleared often were disproportionately minority communities. Okay, so that is all kind of some of the impetus leading up to the Fair Housing Act's passage in 1968, which was passed as Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act. It prohibited discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, and national origin. And then it was later amended to also include sex, familial status, and disability as protected classes. For purposes of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination means treating a person differently in any housing transaction because that person is part of a protected class. And a protected class is just a group of people that share a common characteristic. Oregon additionally has state-protected classes, so marital status, source of income. So that includes like housing choice or Section 8 vouchers, social security income, those kinds of sources, sexual orientation, which includes gender identity, and then status as a survivor of domestic violence. And the Fair Housing Act applies to anyone that touches the housing market, to all types of dwellings, to renting, selling, lending, insuring, zoning, and other decisions about development and land use that impact housing. And there are exceptions, but there are very few of them where it doesn't apply. And just kind of an interesting aside, as Oregon started putting protections for fair housing into place in the 1950s and passed the state's fair housing law in 1959, so almost a full decade before there was a federal law put into place. So a part of the Fair Housing Act that is of particular, I think, relevance here is the concept of affirmatively furthering fair housing. So the Fair Housing Act goes a step further for recipients of federal HUD funds by requiring jurisdictions that receive those funds to affirmatively further fair housing. And Springfield gets HUD funds directly through its Community Development Block Program. And then also, as part of the Eugene-Springfield Home Consortium, we get federal home funds. So the city is obligated to affirmatively further fair housing. And what it does is it requires recipients of HUD funds to take meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities free from barriers that restrict access to opportunity based on protected characteristics. And then there are kind of three subparts to that, which are determining who lacks access to opportunity and addressing inequity among protected class groups, promoting integration, reducing segregation, and then transforming racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty into areas of opportunity. And in 2020, the city completed an analysis of impediments to fair housing choice, which identified potential barriers to fair housing in Springfield and looked at possible actions the city could undertake to affirmatively further fair housing. So that picture is just the front of the plan, which is available on our website if you're interested in it. And then in addition to that, annually, when we receive our HUD funds, we have to certify that we will do this. Okay, almost through my part. So another kind of piece of this federal fair housing stuff is this discriminatory effect rule. And it is intended to address practices and policies that unnecessarily cause systemic inequality in housing regardless of whether there is a discriminatory effect, sorry, intent. So basically, it is that the plain text of something doesn't matter if the result of that is discriminatory. And it's been used to challenge practices and policies that unnecessarily exclude people from housing opportunities, including zoning decisions, lending, property insurance policies, and, for example, criminal backgrounds in screening for housing opportunities. Okay, so this slide is from, kind of fully from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. And these are some ways that they identified that fair housing issues can come up in the work that a city does, especially in relation to planning and zoning, so things that the Planning Commission might see. So where housing can be built and what type of housing. So that's dictated in large part by zoning. And this can either reinforce or disrupt patterns of segregation that have been created. How many people can live somewhere? So occupancy limits or limits on number of bedrooms could discriminate based on familial status, so whether someone has children or other protected classes, because there are some races or ethnicities of folks that are more likely to have multigenerational living in the same house. What materials can be used in building housing could be an issue if a city is requiring materials that result in more expensive construction. That could have an impact on housing affordability, which could disproportionately impact a protected class. Cities also need to consider making allowances for protected classes. So an example of that would be if a building needed a different setback in order to accommodate a ramp to provide ADA access into a building, for example. And then enforcement of codes and ordinances. So the codes and the ordinances themselves could be fine how they're written. However, in a complaint-based system, there's a chance that that could result in more complaints against members of protected classes. Oh, sorry, we switched slides, but it didn't switch slides. We're just going to reshare it. I think it might be frozen. We're reconnecting. Sandy, do you happen to have the slides up to share? Okay. Commissioner Buck, can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, did you lose us for a minute?
Nope.
No.
Nope, I heard that whole time. You know, I was with you at the slide, it just wouldn't advance. But I'm here, I'm with you. For what it's worth, you're doing great, Chelsea.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, we're back. All right, so this again is pulled from the Fair Housing Council of Oregon. So fair housing law prohibits land use regulations, restrictive covenants, and conditions or special use permits that may limit housing choice based on protected class. So if a land use decision falls into one of those categories and a decision could limit housing choice for a protected class, it might be a fair housing issue. For the sake of time, I'm not going to go through all these examples, but you're welcome to look at them later. Kind of the big gist of it is putting extra requirements or conditions or process on an applicant for a housing development that would not be put on other applicants doing something similar, is what a lot of these relate to. And then my last slide here is about the concept of veiled references and code words. So this is another, this is a concept that applies to deliberations and decisions about zoning changes and other land use decisions that affect housing. And there was a Ninth Circuit Court case in 2016 that found that veiled references and code words for racial and ethnic minorities that were used in denying a residential zone change can be discriminatory, sorry, discrimination that violates the Fair Housing Act. So this was a case where a city council denied a zone change application for a higher-density residential development than was previously allowed at the site. In the case, the plaintiff claimed that city councillors had made comments that the development would create a low-cost, high-crime neighborhood, that residents would be drug dealers, they'd have large extended families and living in the same unit. And various other statements that the court held were plausibly discrimination in the form of veiled references and code words for Hispanic and African-American populations who are protected under the Fair Housing Act. And I'll turn it over to Chelsea.
Okay, so now I'm going to go into how the fair housing laws tie into how we do Oregon land use planning. So for our development codes, we're required to have clear and objective standards per state law. And these standards must have clear meaning and result in predictable outcomes. They should not be subjective, with some exceptions for historic districts. So an example of subjectivity is criteria for reasonable compatibility with surrounding neighborhood with minimal impact on livability or appropriate development of surrounding properties. Cities can offer an alternative discretionary path to approval for developers wanting greater flexibility, and we do have both of those options now. We adopted our clear and objective criteria as part of the development code update in 2022, and we also have a discretionary path. So the tie to fair housing is the subjectivity in codes can and has been used to make discriminatory decisions, as Katie just gave an example on the previous slide. And clear and objective standards help remove a lot of this subjectivity as much as possible. Despite the efforts to mitigate the fair housing concerns, development standards could still cause unreasonable cost or delay to needed housing. So I know one of your favorite topics is all the fun state rulemaking we're trying to track and deal with now. So there's a lot of state rulemaking going on related to goal 10 for housing that requires us to plan for housing in a way that's responsive to our community needs. We must plan for a range of incomes, locations, housing types, and density that might meet a variety of our community needs, which is part of the fair housing tie. The state rulemaking efforts to implement the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis was established by legislation in the 2023 session, and the rulemaking efforts are currently underway, with some of the rules just being adopted at the end of last year and more being adopted at the end of this year. The big revisions are going to be to our housing planning efforts, with some revisions to statewide planning goal 14 for urbanization, with the intent to facilitate more housing production, affordability, and choice to meet housing needs. Part of the intent is to ensure equitable access to housing. The rulemaking is split into three large topic areas that are shown on this slide here. And this is going to influence the upcoming planning work, which I'll get into a little bit. So the first thing we'll be needing to work on is our housing capacity analysis, which is a plan for our 20-year housing need. And we must plan for a variety of housing types and income levels. State law changed in 2019, and cities outside the Portland metro area must now complete this analysis every eight years. Our last one was done in 2010, so it's pretty outdated at this point. And our next analysis is due by the end of 2027. This work identifies areas of need based on the current housing inventory and buildable land supply and requires changes to allow more housing development if there is a capacity shortfall within our urban growth boundary. This could involve addressing it using zone or code changes or urban growth boundary expansion or a combination of both. We will continue monitoring the state rulemaking efforts to understand our new requirements for this work. The state did recently finalize a methodology that allocates a regional share of housing needs to cities through the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis Program. That future housing need will be broken out by how many units at each income level a city will be responsible for producing. This is a new requirement, as historically, cities have calculated their own housing need locally. The state methodology looks more regionally and then allocates things locally to consider things such as housing underproduction and housing to meet the needs of people experiencing homelessness. So the other component, oh, I still, I guess, have more on that one. A lot around housing. Well, here are a lot more from me in the next couple of years on that one, too. So another difference is identifying the housing production targets. The state assigns these targets for each city and will be held accountable for working towards those targets. I'll talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. We still have the ability to say where housing is built and what types of housing to meet our different income level targets. The state recently also created a housing production dashboard to provide us data on housing needs, the production targets. And they also included housing equity indicators to monitor equitable housing outcomes by city. This includes data on cost burden, displacement risk, and segregation by race and income, among other factors. So if you're interested, we can share that link after. Lots of data to dig into on that one. The recently adopted rules add new requirements for cities to identify and evaluate fair housing issues as part of this housing capacity analysis. So they're just really trying to tie in a lot more of the fair housing work into housing planning. So the other part of the capacity analysis requires us to identify our housing production strategies. This work is due by the end of 2028, a year after the capacity analysis deadline. This is a new requirement as of 2019. We must describe actions that we will take within the city's control to make sure that needed housing is built and identify timelines to adopt or implement those strategies. This work must also be done every eight years with a midpoint check-in on progress. Cities that are not hitting their housing production targets may be put into a housing acceleration program. So the Department of Land Conservation and Development will play a role in that, in helping cities identify what the barriers are to production and working with them to identify new or additional strategies and potentially resources to help. For the tie to fair housing, as of 2020, state rules require cities with a population of 10,000 or more to affirmatively further fair housing through the development and implementation of the housing production strategy. So Katie talked a little bit about that earlier in regards to federal requirements from HUD. We're also tying that into our state land use planning as well. So the collective actions and policies of the housing production strategy must achieve fair and equitable housing. must achieve fair and equitable housing outcomes and must explain how the strategies are doing this. We must also analyze the benefits and burdens of the strategies to certain demographics, such as low-income communities, communities of color, people with disabilities and other state and federal protected classes. One specific example is requiring consideration of producing physically accessible housing units. We must also describe our engagement to the entire community, including how we are reaching out to state and federal protected classes. As of 2023, House Bill 2001 followed up by saying that one of the purposes of the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis is production of housing in a way that creates more housing choice by affirmatively furthering fair housing. And the state definition of this will align, does align with the federal definition, so we're no longer just relying on the federal requirements, since this is now baked into the state laws as well. Okay, and my last slide before I pass it to Sandy. Climate-friendly areas, which I know you've heard a lot from me on. So one component of implementing this is identifying and designating one or more areas that can accommodate 30% of our current and future housing need, which ties into the housing planning requirements in the work we'll be starting on soon. Part of the climate-friendly area work requires us to consider how to achieve fair and equitable housing outcomes shown on the right side of the slide here. This involves analyzing where there may be potential displacement risk for existing residents if redevelopment were to occur within a climate-friendly area, and requires cities to identify actions to mitigate this risk. We're in the process of identifying those strategies for our climate-friendly areas, and we'll be sharing more about that. Soon, we did get some high-level input in our last climate-friendly area survey to get a sense of what's important to the community on those topics. So fair housing is tied to affordable housing, but they are distinct concepts. Fair housing is about barriers to access for protected classes, and often there is overlap because members of protected classes often are households with low incomes. So for example, in Oregon, households with disabilities on average have lower incomes than households without disabilities, and people of color are more likely to experience poverty and housing instability because of federal and local policies that have excluded them from opportunities. So a lot of the content that Katie covered. Affordable housing production and maintenance is also very important to fair housing, but it's not the only issue. Physical accessibility for people with disabilities and different housing sizes to accommodate different familial statuses are other examples. So state rules have certain engagement requirements for our climate-friendly areas and any other future transportation-related planning projects we'll be doing. This focuses on engaging the full community, including certain populations that overlap with a lot of the fair housing protected classes we talked about tonight, and includes additional populations that the state has identified as being historically or currently marginalized. And I'll pass it over to Sandy.
Okay, so this slide is more appropriate to like your actual planning commission meetings or community events. So people have the right to free speech, and so as commissioners, you may hear discriminatory comments during public meetings. However, the Chair of the Planning Commission can stop the speech if it involves threats or is intimidating others. It may be helpful to explain what type of testimony the commission will consider in making its decision. City officials cannot take discriminatory statements as a basis for a decision. In other words, prejudicial comments from the public are not a reason to reject a project. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, a city cannot make a decision that has the result of causing a disparate impact on a protected class. So as Katie explained, the Ninth Circuit Court, Circuit Case Avenue 6E Investments versus the City of Yuma found that the community's racial comments were a motivating factor that violated the Fair Housing Act. So decision-makers cannot rely on discriminatory views held by community members, even if the decision-makers, you do not agree with those sentiments personally. So a desire to avoid community backlash based on community discriminatory beliefs can be an unlawful motivating factor. Next. So this last slide is basically summarizing the main points of this presentation and illustrates the ways in which the Planning Commission has a role in promoting inclusive communities, or in the words of the council goal, foster an environment that values diversity and inclusion. As Katie mentioned, our museum is having a opening for their new exhibit on housing this Friday from 5:00 to 7:00. So encourage you to check that out either Friday or anytime thereafter over the six months that it will be there. And with that, I will now open it, give it back to our Chair to see if there are any questions or comments on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Chelsea, Katie and Sandy, you guys did a great job. Are there any commissioners that have questions about the, for staff about the fair housing training? Want to finish them up?
Yeah, so, yes, we're okay? I didn't hear that. Okay, thank you. So I'm curious about the, the. You said that the feds give the city money and the city is obligated to do an affirmative or pro forma a design of housing needs. So does this, is the city required to do more than what the feds fund them?
So I think you're talking about affirmatively furthering fair housing.
Yes.
Yeah, so Chelsea, do you want to go back to that slide and the state one? So yeah, there's the federal requirement that I think, and Christina can check me if I'm wrong, applies across the board because we receive federal HUD funds.
I understand the requirement. My question is, and this kind of gets into also, the city or the state is telling us that you will provide this much housing and will monitor how you do that, right? So my question is, is to what, at what point do you say, we're not, we can't do anymore?
I think that's probably going to happen quite often with the new housing planning work. I think that's been a main point of concern. A lot of cities have shared of our new housing projections are higher than what we've planned for historically, and we don't have the resources to provide the amount of subsidy. Like I think it's like 58% of our, 68%? Sixty?
Zero.
Oh, six zero, 60% of our new housing projection is for lower income households. So that usually requires a direct subsidy in order to make it affordable. And there's a big gap between the housing need and how would, how would we actually meet that need? So I think that's going to be a challenge all of the cities are going to be facing, and I think the state will hopefully be helping us navigate that, but remains to be seen how it will work out.
So will we structure our response in such a way that, how to put this, we can prove that we have done everything we can and that here's the other barriers which we have no control over, so that when the state comes to us and says, you know, you're not doing the right thing, we can present it in such a way that they'll just be, I don't know what word to use, but go away?
So that I think is getting at what Chelsea was talking about in terms of the housing acceleration program. So there's sort of this midpoint check-in in our eight-year housing production cycle where the state will come in and say, how close, how far are you from these various targets we've given you? And then they will select a number of cities from that who are kind of the worst performers. And I think they've given themselves the room to determine on a yearly basis how many actually that number is, and they will put them into this housing acceleration program, of which I think part of the conversation is what is beyond the city's control to contribute? And is there support that the state can provide either in the form of technical assistance or potentially funding?
So will the interface with the state include? So for example, I think LCDC is an impediment to housing, their policy. So will the city include some of the explanations of why LCDC is restricting housing?
I think it's a little premature to say what we'll decide at that point, because we're not there. And so until we know what we've tried and what's holding us back, it's a little premature to decide what we would tell them.
Okay.
Commissioner Schmuck, can I, can I add one thing?
Jump in. Yeah, thank you.
Also, no, this, this topic and this issue is the top priority on the mayor's legislative agenda. He, he absolutely through, through his means is pushing back on a lot of these things. So it's not just the avenues that are presented here. The city is, is pushing back in, in multiple ways, and it's a top priority for the mayor and the council. So I don't know if that helps speak to your question, but just wanted to put that out there.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, well, so I guess my main concern point right now, from, I mean, I've tried to look at this carefully, you know, both using values from the multifamily index, is that right? And then some other parameters I used. I can't see where anybody that makes an average wage, median wage in Springfield can afford a house. I mean, they just can't, it doesn't pencil, nobody, zero. And I've read where some cities, you know, they're 50%, there's houses, you know, within 50%. 50% of the houses available, you know, the, 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 the average wage, and you can define what that is, but can afford it, some are 30, you know, we're zero. So obviously got a huge problem, and I just don't see that, you know, I see us kind of going the wrong direction, I guess is what I'm saying. So I mean, this is a huge problem, and I, and I think it's very important. I mean, they're today, I assume people are displaced because they can't find a place to live. So seems to me we need to come up with stuff before 28, but, you know, I know it's, it's, it's a very difficult problem. Last point, let me make this, you know, I hear about this gentrification, but you know, unless your city has strong housing, both in terms of affordability, but you know, you know, there's not a bunch of dilapidated housing around. If you do have dilapidated housing, you know, lenders are not going to want to put their money in that. So, you know, we need to be concerned with all these things. Mainly, we need to be concerned with where the money is coming from. I mean, the fair housing thing, you know, watching out for these people that, you know, are, are struggling, that's very important, but it's about the money. And if we raise the quality of housing, those people will be served. I just see us throwing roadblocks in front of the normally occurring housing, normally occurring affordable housing. So I think it seems that we need to do this sooner than later. Thank you.
I did want to provide just one clarification on the duty to affirmatively further fair housing, but I think that's a slightly different topic than the state obligations around housing production and meeting our housing, whatever, the, the figure, the houses that we're supposed to provide on a scale basis. The production target, thanks. There's too many terms that are being coined each legislative cycle. The federal government is the entity most concerned with the duty to affirmatively further fair housing, and the way that that, that we show compliance with that requirement right now is through the adoption of the consolidated plan that we submit to the, the federal HUD. And that is a plan that goes into detail on how the city of Eugene and Springfield together are going to spend the federal dollars that we get for housing. So that is a plan that is tied to the federal funds that we get and showing that we're using those funds in a way that will affirmatively further fair housing. So there is a better tie-in, I think, on the federal side to money that we get goes towards that duty to affirmatively further. There's no, at this time at least, independent obligation outside of what we identify in our consolidated plan to take other actions. And nobody has the, you don't have the right to sue a city or a government for not affirmatively furthering fair housing if you're a, you know, Springfield resident who doesn't like the direction that the city's taking, for example. So I hope that provides sort of like two different spheres that, that we operate in, and they can talk to each other certainly, but the fair housing obligation that's known by the acronym of AFFH is federal as opposed to state.
But, but they're both being, wanting us to be proactive, both the state and.
Yes, the, the fair housing, the, the Fair Housing Act is concerned with really similar goals that the state is concerned with in the housing production. I think they're trying to get at the same thing, but they're legally slightly different avenues.
Appreciate it.
And I just wrote down a couple of things that came to mind when you were talking to. So you might be interested in Oregon Housing and Community Services, OHCS, recently came out with a State of Housing in Oregon report. It's the first time they've done that, and they do dive more, not at the local level, but into the state level in terms of housing affordability. And one chart in particular I'm thinking of, they look at with the median housing price in the state, what income a family would need to be able to afford that. And then they also break it down by different interest rates. And yeah, their conclusion is also basically nobody can afford the median housing price. So that was one thing. Another one, in response to needing to take action prior to this 2027, 2028 deadline, we do have several housing actions that the city is taking right now that we have outlined in our house, city housing strategy. So we could share that with you also, if you'd be interested. And then the last one I wrote down was just on the topic of money. So Oregon Housing and Community Services manages all of the state's funding for housing development as well as federal funds that come through the state. And they've recently changed up their application process so they can try and get a better handle of all of these capital A, capital H affordable housing projects that could potentially be in the pipeline, which I speculate part of that is a hope to make a request to the legislature to fund more of that housing, so more of it can be built.
Well, if I may, so it's my understanding that the public, a lot of public funds that we're going, are, are, costs significantly more for, for, for the, a public subsidized dwelling than for private. So, and I also think that some of the, for example, giving money to a, to a nonprofit in this current environment in Springfield will drive up the price of housing. So I think it's important to, to look at these on both sides of, of the impacts of what you do. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Schmuck. Any other commissioners have questions? I know we have a couple of our newer commissioners. I want to give you guys an opportunity. Doesn't sound like any other comments or questions. With that, let's quickly change to our next agenda item of Springfield, Oregon Speaks. Sandy?
Thank you. So we, at least my understanding is that Commissioner Green, one Commissioner Driggs didn't have your iPads when we did the training. And so just wanted to touch on the Springfield, Oregon Speaks as a way that we set up our agendas and encourage you, if you haven't had a chance to log in. And I just want to emphasize that, that helps the public to see when you've read their comments. You can directly communicate with staff or the applicant through that. You can also do it by email separately, but if you, you can do it through Springfield, Oregon Speaks. If you've logged in, you'll see those buttons. And then also it has the list at the bottom for planning commissioners of the city council's schedule. So I can open that up, but it's, that's really just what I wanted to talk on, to, to highlight quickly tonight and give other commissioners a chance to say anything about their tips, if you've been using that. And that's pretty much the quick overview.
All right. So it looks like that brings us to the. So it looks like that brings us to the end of our work session. Unless there were further questions, I don't see any at the moment. Then I hereby adjourn the work session. So since it's two minutes to seven, do we want to just go forward with our regular meeting or everybody good with that? Let me, let me do it this way. Any objections to open our, our regular meeting now? Sandy or Christina, any, any objections to doing that?
No objections and the attendance has not changed.
Right. Okay. I hereby open the regular meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission. And since our attendees have not changed, there's no need to do a roll call. Are there any adjustments to this agenda?
None from staff.
Okay. Then let's stand and recite the pledge of allegiance. And I'll go ahead and mute myself and listen to you guys. Excellent. Are there any corrections to the minutes published, published in the packet? Okay. Seeing, seeing no corrections being suggested. Then the December 3rd, 2024 minutes are approved. Now we can move to business from the audience. We will now take business from the audience. This is the time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the planning commission, not otherwise on our agenda tonight. If anyone is online or in the audience. Do we have anybody online or in the audience, Sandy?
In the audience, we have our council liaison, Councilor Doyle. And we also have a staff person online. So Nathan, if you want to speak, raise your hand. I'm thinking not.
Okay. Excellent. Then we will now hear business from the planning commission. Are there any reports of council action? I think we have a report coming to us from the most recent city council meeting, but I don't believe it's been published. So we can pick that up at our next planning commission meeting. So the next, the next item is to elect planning commissioners and officers and committee liaisons. How, how I think it's best to do this is I'd like you to kind of discuss the different roles and see who's interested in what role. And and then kind of, you know, vote on it as a slate rather than one at a time. I think that it makes more sense to me to do that. And so I wanted to give, maybe kind of open it for some discussion on roles that people are interested in. And if people, if our new commissioners have questions about what council liaison does, the BPAC or the advisory committee, please ask. So at this point, just kind of want to do a quick check in with you guys. Are there roles that people are, are interested in? And if we could just go left to right, starting with Commissioner, or excuse me, my right, which would be Commissioner Weber and kind of go, go down the line and just kind of check in. Would that be okay with you guys?
Yeah, that's, I think that's fine, Andrew. My question would be is what, is there a list of what all the different committees and liaisons are? I'm not really sure I know all of them because I came in kind of in the middle last year a little bit, so.
We have, we have five. We have chair and vice chair. Then we have council liaison. Then we have the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee. And then we have the community development advisory committee. And I know that and I know that Commissioner Thompson has expressed interest in the community development advisory committee. He has served us pretty well on the B, on the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee or BPAC. So those are the five that we have to elect tonight.
Thank you. I mean, all, since you started with me, I'll just, I'll just pull out that the city council, I am, I'm the city council liaison for the Springfield Utility Board, so I will be there anyway. So I'll just throw that out.
Does, does that feel comfortable to you? Kind of double dipping on that, sort of speak with, with sub and planning commission. Does that work for you, Commissioner Weber?
Yes, that's fine. I just was, if somebody else really wants it, that's great, but I will, I will be there also.
Fabulous. Commissioner Schmunk?
Yeah, no, I think Commissioner Weber's a good choice for that. You know, I'm happy to, you know, to, to serve as maybe as vice chair. I don't know if anybody else is interested in that, but I'm happy to, to do that.
Yeah. And it's I'm just getting to know our, our new commissioners. Commissioner Greenwell, I believe, is next to you. Is that correct?
That's me.
So I know that you're new to, new to us, but not new to planning commissions. So are there any?
I still don't want to be chair.
Okay, well, that's okay. Actually, I, I've been on the, on the commission for a while and I've not had the opportunity to be chair. And it's definitely something I would like to do for this next term. So if there's no objections, I would definitely like to be chair. But I will, I will give you one kind of heads up. BPAC is an interesting committee, but as of the last, when I was on it a couple of years ago, or a year or so ago, they did not have an online forum. And so it was, and, and their stuff was, there wasn't a lot of technology use. So it was, it was very much a, a meeting that they wanted you to come in person. So factor that in to BPAC, but.
Can I ask when they meet? When BPAC meets?
I, I don't know. Sandy, can you help with that?
Sure. So they meet Wednesday evenings at 5:30 every other month as a full committee. And then they have two subcommittees that meet in between. And I don't know when the committees meet. But I.
I don't know that you need.
Yeah, I think the subcommittee meetings are probably flexible in terms of their schedule.
Yeah. And, and Commissioner Driggs, you, if you were the BPAC liaison, you would not have to go to both of the subcommittee meetings, is my understanding. I think you could check that out with them. But I think that going to their, their main meeting and being able to report back to us what's going on, I think would probably qualify and be enough.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I said Wednesday. It's Tuesday. And they are hybrid, but I do think that there is more in person, like they do some inventory work. And so there's more on the ground kind of work rather than just in a meeting. And both CDUCK and BPAC meetings, you can find more about them on Springfield Oregon Speaks because they see, use the same platform.
Is there need in either of those committees for more than one commissioner? I'm counting positions and I'm counting commissioners and coming up short.
Yeah, not everybody's gonna, not everybody's gonna have one. One, one of the things that'll happen is over the course of time, commissioners leave, leave the, leave the commission for whatever reason, or if people have life changes and they need to, you know, step off of a subcommittee, those kinds of things. You know, so things can change over the course of time, but no, we're not going to all have, have a spot on there. And so it's perfectly fine if as new commissioners, you want to just get used to being on the commission and doing the work that we do. They're four year terms, so you'll have another opportunity next year to jump into any one of these five.
I'd like to learn more about the community development one. It sounds the most interesting, so I may sit in on a couple of those.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. So did you want to, did, did you want to take that role on or do you want to, is that, are you volunteering for that?
Certainly, but I don't want to step on the toes of the person that's already doing that, if he's still interested to.
No, I think you're fine. I think everybody's toes are just, just fine. We've had a lot of turnover and so I'm not actually sure that the person that was doing it last. I suspect the person that was doing it last time is no longer on the commission. So, uh, uh, all right, well, that works for me for you to be on CDUCK. I think that's a great way of getting to know going on around the city. Commissioner Driggs, are you open to BPAC?
Yes, I'm interested in BPAC.
All right. That is a, that's an important, I think that's going to be pretty important coming up because as the state's goals to reduce vehicle traffic through various means, that's going to be one of the solutions that the city looks to. And I know that safety and accessibility are huge issues with that. So I think that's great. So Commissioner Weber is council liaison. Commissioner Thompson volunteered for vice chair, as did Commissioner Schmunk. I think either, either way is fine with me. Commissioner Schmunk, how do you, you know, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm flexible either way. I guess I'd nominate you for chair.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Just know with vice chair, it does require a couple of things. It, it requires an, an additional briefing on Monday afternoons in preparation for this meeting. If I'm not able to be there, then the vice chair would, would step in and, and, you know, go through the agenda and those kinds of things. You know? Sandy, based on your wording, it sounds like Commissioner Thompson didn't have a strong desire either way.
Yeah, I just, he text, so I reached out to Commissioner Thompson, knowing he was sick and asked him what his willingness is. And what I typed in the chat, I will read out to it was chat just to chair or vice chair Buck, who's acting as our chair. But he said, hi Sandy, and thank you. I would be willing to participate as liaison to CDUCK or council. I would be willing to be the vice chair if no one else is nominated. Thank you very much. Sorry, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting.
Is there, looking at the, are there any nominations for vice chair? I mean, it sounds like we have nomination for, for myself as chair, nomination for council liaison, nomination for BPAC and CDUCK. I would nominate Commissioner Schmunk for vice chair if, if he's interested. Sounds like he is. I don't object to this. All right. So with that, I want to just kind of read off, we've got myself as chair, Commissioner Schmunk as vice chair, Commissioner Weber as council liaison, Commissioner Driggs as the BPAC liaison and Commissioner Greenwell as CDUCK liaison. I don't hear any objections to that, so I think that covers that.
So could we have a vote on the slate that you've put forward?
Yes. I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm reading through my script right now and I'm seeing we need to vote on that. Can we vote on the slate that was just recited?
Sure. So I'll do a roll call with Commissioner Driggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Greenwell?
Aye.
Commissioner Schmunk?
Aye.
Commissioner Weber?
Aye.
And Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
Motion packs is unanimous.
Excellent. Uh, any other business from the planning commission? Any business from the Department of Public Works?
I'll just let you know, we do have a meeting on Wednesday. It will be January 22nd because we have Martin Luther King Day on Monday, which means the council meets on Tuesday, which means you meet on Wednesday. So calling that to your attention. It will be a work session at six, actually you'll meet as the Committee for Citizen Involvement to review an engagement plan for amendments to the floodplain code for how we comply with FEMA's requirements. So six o'clock on Wednesday, the 22nd. And then we also will meet as scheduled at your first meeting in February. So keep those on your calendar.
Thank you. All right. Any other business from the public works department, Sandy?
No, thank you.
All right. Well, then I here adjourn the planning commissioner's regular meeting. Have a great evening and I will see you guys on the 22nd, it sounds like.
Great job, Commissioner Buck.
Thank you.